Justin.
To all to order the city council meeting for 2025. Please be open and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the meeting, Carol. Please call the vote. Anderson, here.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Monty.
Here.
Stand here.
See.
Here. We have a forum. Um, Mayor's comments, I'm going to focus on the master plan survey. At the workshop, we received postcards that we could pass out to folks. We're getting good response, but really it's such an important survey. And it's a big lift for the planning commission to update our plan. So appreciate, Joe, if you could pass on the council's appreciation for that work. And hopefully we can all encourage folks to fill out that survey.
Madam Mayor, what is the deadline for returning those? Is there a date? October 6th, thank you.
So a little bit of time, but we're getting down to the, don't put it off too much longer, so. Uh, and with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan for city manager comments.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Uh, yeah, and thank you, Mayor, for mentioning the, uh, the, the survey. I think we'll probably have a lot of reminders tonight. I won't steal Joe's thunder with their discussion they had at the planning commission meeting, but just another reminder as well that, that the community kind of open house is also scheduled for September 30th, next Tuesday. Uh, I really want folks to attend that event at the high school. It's kind of a drop-in event. You don't have to stay the entire time, but there'll be multiple stations that I'm sure Joe will uh, kind of highlight during his, uh, planning commission report, uh, tonight, but, uh, keep helping us, uh, spread the word, uh, as the mayor indicated, we've had a good response so far, but we want to, uh, a lot more folks to participate. We want to capture as many voices as we can. All right, my biggest up to the, update tonight is, uh, related to the Molten Bald Head restroom. So the old restroom has, is moved away. Uh, it wasn't destroyed, it was, it was moved off to another location, and that's actually a topic of, uh, your consent agenda, uh, tonight, where Andrew Block is at Lake Shore Resort. Wanted the old building and, um, were able to, uh, come to an agreement on, on the terms of, of taking that away, and, uh, so that, that building will live on in, uh, the area, but Midwest construction is, is hard at work. Uh, my understanding is tomorrow they are on schedule to do some foundation prep. They've located the, uh, the water and sewer utilities in the area. Uh, it was kind of a concern for us because we didn't know exactly where things were at. We were worried about them digging around in, in that area, and uh, our tribal nations have been on site and kind of, uh, monitoring some of that, that work as well. Uh, but things are on track, uh, and that project has kicked off, and so we hope to be substantially complete with that, uh, by the end of the year with the final touches, uh, in the spring, but uh, concrete foundation should start this week, so you should start to see some, some, um, buildings starting out there, so. The other piece I wanted to touch on, uh, we don't have yet a, uh, agenda item for your, your parking improvements task force, but uh, during this last, uh, period of time, the, the mayor and, and council member Monty, who's chairing the task force, and I, uh, met with three parking consultants and, and went over their proposals and allowed them to kind of present their proposals to us, and we asked them a, a number of questions. Uh, we're hoping to regroup this week, uh, and, uh, kind of, uh, narrow down, uh, the list and a recommendation to bring back probably to your workshop meeting on October, uh, 8th, so that's, that's moving along, uh, as well. In fact, I think I told all of you last week, uh, that we've had a couple later workshop agendas for you, but, uh, we have a lot planned for your October 8th, uh, workshop, so order, order to come there.
Great. Um, uh, just a fair warning, my computer is giving me fits, so I will be looking at the packet on my phone, so. That's why I'm staring at my phone when I'm staring at my phone.
Might have to do the same.
Yes. Um, are there any agenda changes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I want an agenda change, I'd like to remove item 9E in the consent agenda down to new businesses, the Dark Sky's at Oval Beach application.
For a second, do we?
We don't have to vote.
I don't think you have to vote, okay. All right, anything else? All right, um, that takes us to our guest speaker, Commissioner Rivers. Thank you for joining us.
Really? Um, first thing, a few, big update. For years, the talk has been the Cawkins Dam or the Alleghan Dam. Are they going to remove it? What's going to happen? Is it going to be sold? What's? Well, we've heard officially that a company by the name of Confluence Hydro has air an agreement, purchase agreement to, with consumers to buy all 13 of their hydro, hydroelectric dams for the grand total of a dollar each. So. Yep, so and the, the reason, one of the reasons behind that is, so per state statute, back in the 60s, at least for the Alleghan Dam, when that was purchased.
Bless you.
That was purchased with ratepayer money through the Public Service Commission. So ergo, when they sell it, whatever money they get from the sale of it has to go back to the ratepayers, not to consumers' energy itself. So. To make it, to make it equal and fair, so. Whatever that amount is, so.
A dollar, from a dollar, whatever that amount is, it'll go back to the ratepayers? Oh, that's nice.
It's for the company. They still have to work out negotiations, but the long and short of it is, they have made every indication that they will maintain all, all the dams to reduce electricity, just like consumers was, and sell that electricity back to consumers. So. I know you were downstream from here, you know, from there for you guys, so, you know, everybody, you know, will that affect the water level? What will that do? Well, I don't think that's going to change anytime in the future, so. That's the first thing. Uh, next thing, um, the tourist council and the, uh, perks commission is working in conjunction to, they're putting together a, uh, tourist postcard promotion. And so they're picking 10 restaurants across the county. So they're like, one from Sagatuck, one from Alleghan, one from Plainwell, one from, you know, different parts of the county, and they have to be open all year. Uh, you know, full-time, fully-staffed. You know, a, a part of the community that, you know, is good to, to promote, you know, close to a park, you know, so they can have, you know, it's a park, you know, there's a park close to here, while you're close to this park, go visit this restaurant, and you might get 10% off of entree or something, you know, along that line. So it's kind of a neat thing to, for the county to promote different places, so there might be, I don't know who they picked in Sagatuck. I know it's going to be somewhere, somebody in this vicinity, but I'm not sure at the moment. Um, budget. So we have a proposed budget before us that we will be discussing again Thursday, and our official public hearing will be October 9th, 7:00 PM. So it's one of our two meetings a year that are the evening, 7:00 PM. Normally we meet at 9:00 AM in the morning. Uh, so, just putting that out there, we have to set the hearing this, this Thursday, but the official public hearing is October 9th, 7:00 PM, so we're looking at $40 million general fund, which is a 6.4% increase, mostly due to new construction around the county. And $80 million special revenue. So that'd be like your 911 millage, county roads, senior millage, all the funds that are funneled through the county but have to go for a specific purpose. So, and that's down about 1% or so. That's what we're looking at. Um, and another, another thing that would come down the pipe. Previously, every five years, equalization in the county pays to have new satellite maps and new images purchased for the purpose of equalization and assessments, all the local municipalities and, and cities. Uh, and it's been commonplace in the past where there's been an ask or request for a local municipality to pay half, 50% of that. So, and we're, we want to do a different model this year, this time, so instead of five years, we're going to do it every three. So, so it's been three years. So we're in the process of working with a contractor to do that. I think it's like over 415,000, but in the future, you know, there will be an ask for everybody, you know, for whatever your portion of that is to kick in 50% of that cost, and which will be a great use to your assessor, they can get a equal, you know, current image of that, of all the properties when they, as I go to do that, so. And then, uh, last thing, kind of a positive thing, I don't know if anybody's a Drew Barrymore fan, but there's been some positive press with Drew Barrymore. She highlighted Virtue Cider in Fenville. The Woods Luxury Campground in Ganges Township. And Sagatuck State, Dune State Park is a place to visit in Michigan. So it's kind of a neat attract, you know, it's just publicity, you know, I don't know if people listening in, you know, are curious about where, what her advice were to visit, but it's kind of a, you know, that doesn't happen every day, so. You know, that's what I, and one more thing. And I'll leave these here. Um, Alleghan Alert. So in the past, and they're still existing. If there's a tornado or high wind event, we have tornado sirens around the county that go off. I'm not sure where the closest one is to here, and those are typically owned by the municipality themselves, but now those are run off like 50s and 60s VHF frequencies, which is totally obsolete and unable to be fixed. And it's really expensive to put new technology in those those pieces of equipment. So what we're going to now, for the purposes of emergency management, and these will come out also, I'll, also be distributed, hopefully be distributed in, uh, winter tax bills everywhere, is an Alleghan Alert system, so similar to like an Amber Alert. All this is, is you scan the QR code, sign up, totally free. So when, like, similar to, you know, that Saturday when there's a severe thunderstorm, you know, you'll get an alert on your phone that says, for this, your portion of the county, it'll be geo-tracked based on where you are. That, so instead of siren, you'll get it on your phone, so. Yes.
Brad, you know, for people that don't have smartphones, will the sirens still be used?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Where they are in existing function.
Okay.
There are parts of the county where they have fallen out of function and the municipality has decided not to fix them. You know, and another example is Palisades. Before they shut down, they had like 25 sirens, and that was their warning system. Right? But since they decided to start up, now it's all through text alert. If you're in that area, you have to, you need to sign up if you want to get the alerts from them, so that's just a, just good obsolete technology, too much to, you know, this is far easier to maintain and manipulate, so.
Great, any other questions? Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks, Brad.
Brad.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our first, uh, public comment, and this is for agenda items only. Uh, is there anybody in the room that wishes to make a public comment? Anyone online wish to make a public comment? You see anything, Sarah?
I didn't.
All right, uh, with that, then we'll move to the consent agenda. Uh, can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
A second.
All right, any questions before we vote?
Yes. Um, I noticed on all four of the special events, including 9A, looking at the application checklist that, um, all of the checklists are either partially completed or not checked, I think, so not checked out, but I'm wondering is about certificate of insurance for those four events, have those been provided? Because I hate to, you know, pass an event that isn't, doesn't, we don't have a certificate of insurance first.
I know she's, uh, so, conflict tonight, so, uh, so we'll see if she, she pipes up, and I know it's something that Jamie does, uh, require of the applicant, so obviously it's, it's part of our kind of final checklist before the, the event occurs, so.
Right, well, from filling out these, these forms myself, you know, I just noticed that on all the checklists, the application checklist, um, they're all neither not checked off, or some of them are partially checked off.
Actually, it's unmuted.
Hi, I'm online, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that-
I don't have, I don't have all of them as of this point, and no, they're not always, um, all submitted at the time of application, sometimes I have to get them throughout the process, uh, or right up to the application or, uh, event date.
Sure.
Yeah, so sometimes applicants may not want to go and purchase the insurance until they actually know that the event's going to be approved and the city's fine with it, but it is something that, that we do make sure we have, uh, for them to have their event.
Still, it's contention on that.
True.
Okay.
Thanks, Jamie. Yeah, thanks, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, uh, this is a roll call vote.
Anderson.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Monty.
Yes.
Patterson. Peterson. And Stan.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, that takes us to staff reports, boards and commissions. We've already heard from the city, the manager, any other questions for Ryan? Chris.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, there are little blue flags and all kinds of things going up all around town, and I got a call from someone that said they thought that a frontier was doing new wifi lines. Do we know anything about that, or is this the 123?
Yeah, so you may recall that we, we did, uh, that Frontier approached us, um, you know, earlier this year, indicating that they're going to, or were interested in installing, you know, fiber optic throughout the, the city, and so we've been receiving a, a ton of different, uh, permit requests for different parts of the city as, as if they've gone along and, uh, developed plans, and so, um, my understanding from Scott is, uh, that they submitted, I think, last week, uh, 20 different missed digs, um, so I'm guessing that, that's what, um, the blue flags are related to water, but you'll see other flags going up, uh, in those areas that they're going to be actually installing that fiber optic.
They're pretty much in public, i- in the public right of way, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any way to get some notice out? I've had two calls about what's going to happen, I don't know if it's for lead pipes or digging or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, we can check with them and, and find, I don't know if Scott has any more to add right now, but we can certainly check with them on their schedule and.
It, it, it does look a little bit overwhelming, but it's not as invasive of an installation as you might think. Uh, when you see that many people, that many utility flags, or think, my gosh, they're going to tear town up, but it's, it's, uh, primarily along Water Street, it's directional drilling, and then it's aerial installations, uh, as you head east, so it's not, it is a lot of workers, they're doing quite a bit of work, but, um, they're running conduit where they need to underground, but, um.
Okay, maybe just something on the website saying what this is, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I wasn't aware they were necessarily starting, like, I don't know, they're even starting over this week, I think you're starting to see the flags start to go up, but we can certainly check and, um, find out if we can get a more solid timeline to share that with the community, absolutely.
They just, on the west side, they sent us a postcard several months ago, but, um, yeah. I, but again, it's been long enough, if I, we'd been saying that over there, I wouldn't have done it, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, anything else for Ryan? Okay, that takes us to the boards, commissions and committees report, starting with Dan Fox. Thanks, Dan.
Good sir. Ah. My time on Blue Star. Um, good evenings. Dan Fox for the Sagatuck Township Fire District, reporting on, you'll see the brief report on the meeting and then statistics. It's statistics for August. Take a look at the next one, so. That is blank, for good reason. Uh, our meeting on the 15th of September set a record for brevity. The chief was out of town on, uh, uh, on a, for a chief's meeting for the state or whatever. And so we were in and out of there in 15 minutes, paid the bills, and that was essentially the, uh, balance of the meeting. Uh, I would say, however, remembering correctly from last meeting, that meeting was before, um, we had the presentation from the, um, bonding attorneys and their firm to the Sagatuck Township. And that took place on whatever date that was, week and a half ago. And, um, uh, I don't think I'm, you know, I sort of, the, the, uh, the sense of the township board was strongly in favor of of bonding the amount yet to be determined. Um, uh, needed for the construction and renovation work at the South Station, as well as some renovation work at this station as well, so that project moves forward and is in the township's hands right now to offici, they got to officially top that, blah, blah, blah. But it's going forward, which is, in our minds, very good news. Next one, Sarah. Here are the, uh, August, uh, statistics. There's nothing that really jumps out as unusual, response times remain. That's actually a little below the average up to that point, I believe. Uh, EMS calls, EMS, those 77 calls are 60, 60% of the calls for the month. Um, and on the, uh, one that shows us locations, 328 total, 27% of which were in Sagatuck City. Next one, please. Uh, to give you a better idea, um, this is how the calls break out for the, for the major categories I've labeled. Uh, as you can see there. We are really, uh, fire district is, are really misnamed with fire because it's an EMS, EMT district for most of our calls. And they just keep coming, so. Uh, next one, please. This follows up a little bit on something I've presented before, these are the, and this chart, uh, that's why I had the, I put the arrow in there because this chart reads backwards, I'm used to seeing dates progress from left to right, in this case, they progress from right to left, but that's Eric and he's European, and I don't know if that's what's going on, but whatever. But anyway, the most current data is that dark blue, dark blue box, but it gives you an idea of how they bounce around out there, largely weather dependent. But always a significant number. And always without compensation unless we get it out of cost recovery on an accident. Next one, please. And these last two are the incident, uh, statistics for life for the contracted ambulance service in the fire district. Most people are interested in is the next chart, I think, no, I'm sorry, back it up if you would, if, Sarah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, the numbers are are small at the bottom, uh, as to the average, uh, response times. You see, running between 11 and 12 minutes, and again, I, I emphasize that that earlier number for our responses, 644. So you have to subtract that from the 11 if you want to know when somebody was there helping, putting a hand on somebody who's injured or, you know, whatever. Our guys are always, virtually always there first, so, on balance, you could, you could make, I could make an argument, and EMS guys wouldn't, but that these, this overstates or tends to, a civilian looking at this will say, wait a minute, I'm going to call for an ambulance, it's going to take 12 minutes to get there, no. It's going to take 12 minutes from the time it's called, but you're not going to be, you're going to, one of our guys is going to be standing over you for half that time. And doing a lot of things that ambulance guys could do as well, so. Uh, and the next one is just the, uh, map, usual map of the city, the priority, the three different counties, the red ones are the most serious ones. You can see, I mean, some of it is Douglas, we can't break the map, they don't break the map for us, and it makes much sense to break the map. And we don't we, we have, but don't provide the addresses for those for privacy reasons, so. And I think that's it. Next one is my smiling grandson.
Yeah.
Nice.
My only grandson, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Dan?
Dan, one question on, um, the good intense slice in the pie, would, would, remind me what good it's.
It's a, it's not, it's kind of a catch-all category. I mean, if somebody calls for help or calls for, uh, you know, getting into a house locked out of a car, there's, it's a whole bunch of those things, but they're, they're soft in the sense that nobody's, nobody's in a life-threatening situation, an injury situation.
Great, thank you, Dan.
My pleasure, thank you, good.
Thanks, Dan.
Gregory, inner urban.
Um, but I told it at our meeting that, uh, that we, uh, at our last, uh, workshop, that, uh, we've broken a record, all-time record with ridership. Uh, I said that in July, but we did it again in August, so we carried 16,352 riders last month, and that's the most ever in the history, so, um, uh, so our ridership is certainly increasing. Laketown had a total of 609 riders. So City of Fenville had 321 riders, so, um, that, that, the increase is really due to our expansion there, as you've seen that. We, uh, we, uh, did a employee vacation time off restructure and new employee bracket, um, which, uh, per, uh, per year served, um, we have a, uh, final definition of how many vacation hours, um, uh, every full-time, uh, employee has, so we took the time to do that. It wasn't really structured before, um, so we've got a nice structure of that. Um, I'm not going to go through all the details of that, of course. Um, our business hours have changed, and that was because, uh, we've had a lot of people request. So we are open Friday and Saturday until 9:00 PM, usually this time of year, we stop at 7:00 because it's after, uh, Labor Day. Um, but, um, uh, we're going to continue going until 9:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays, as long as, uh, people keep riding it. And so, of course, those rides between 7:00 and 9:00 will be $3, or $1.50 per rider, $1.50 for folks that are, um, special needs or, um, or, um, um, kind of my age, kind of. So a little bit older, yeah, right, uh-huh. And so, uh, senior citizens, I should say, um, I don't want to offend anyone. Um, but, um, also, uh, a great news about our dispatch software. Uh, we started with a company, um, if you remember, two years ago, three years ago, I talked about when we made the transition to digital, and so all of our buses have digital communication, maps. Um, the software company that we went with, we thought was going to expand, that would give us the services of having an app, because remember, if you, remember about two years ago, I talked about getting this app. Well, that software company was purchased by another company who's done nothing with this company and isn't going to, so, um, uh, we researched another software company, and we are starting a pilot program from Spare, which will move us, uh, in that, that, that digital direction that we need to go. We weren't being able to get up, updates, um, we've already installed this program, and we started it last week, uh, this pilot program, and, uh, the drivers are loving it, um, and that app should be coming soon, I would say by next spring, summer. Um, we'll have that app out, you'll be able to just click on your phone, say you want to ride, see where that bus is, how far it is from you, when it's at your stop. Um, so we're super excited about that, so, um, it, it amazes me what such a small town this is, and the tens of thousands of people that we move around, um, uh, every month. And, um, and so, um, so it's a great benefit to everyone, um, and I'm proud to be part of that. So, um, just wanted to let you know those things. Uh, our budget is getting a little bit tighter, um, uh, our financial budget, uh, because we are, because we are expanding. Uh, but we are in line with our, with our yearly budget at, um, our expenses are at 89.9% of our budget, we're getting close to our, at the end of our fiscal year, as you know, it's October. Um, and, um, um, our revenue has decreased, uh, compared to previous years due to the absence of federal operating assistance funding. So I talked about that, that was coming up. I know our Fairbox revenues have increased. Um, but we mainly, uh, we mainly, uh, are funded by, uh, our mills, uh, that we receive, as well as federal and state funding. Uh, and an average ride from, uh, the inner urban costs us $7. Um, and, uh, and we charge a dollar per ride or $3 per ride as well, so. We have increased places where we know we can increase, but it was kind of important for us to keep it at that dollar mark if we can, because our buses utilized by a lot of veterans, handicapped folks, and underserved folks that live in these communities. Um, it's a very large, I think it's a larger population than we'd like to think. Um, so, so, um, we, we talked about ex, uh, increasing the fare to $2 or $3, and a lot of us, you know, the working folks and, and right, uh, we, um, we said that would be fine, but, um, but, uh, we kind of, uh, decided that, uh, keep it at a dollar as long as we can, so. Um, I'll give everybody a heads up again, um, when we come to, back to the, um, uh, election time next year, uh, we'll be on the ballot asking for our one mil back. Uh, we started with a, we had a one-mil operating, uh, uh, ask and, and had that, had that for quite a while, um, up until about 20 years ago, where we were getting more federal and state money at that time. Um, and so, uh, we cut it down to 0.5 mil, and that was back when Sherry was running the inner urban. And, uh, so we cut it down to 0.5, as, you know, because we didn't- And, uh, so we cut it down to point five, as, you know, because we didn't need it. Um, but because federal and state, um, we're getting less and less money from them, I think we're gonna need that, uh, to continue our growth uh, for next year. So just a heads up on that. Um, other than that, everything's going great. My first.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so we, we rely, you rely on the mills. Um, do Lake Town and Fenville, do they pay into for the?
Um, they're gonna be putting it on their ballot next year as well. Um, Lake Town pays us per rider, seven dollars per rider. So they go by the per rider right now. Um, Fenville gave us a dollar amount from the beginning, um, that has covered, um, has, has covered their riders. So, yeah, um, the plan is, I think, Lake Town next year is going to ask their voters, uh, 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 if they'd like to keep the service going, then they'll have to divvy up and, uh, and same as Fenville, so.
Thanks. Thanks, Gregory. Joe.
Yeah, um, Kelly, uh, not a lot to report. Uh, I'll start with, um, uh, some storm-related damage that happened on August seventeenth, I believe. Um, there's a power surge that actually resulted from some trees falling, I think on some high-tension lines or something like that. And hit one of the pumping stations. And, uh, these pumping stations have these things called variable frequency drives that control the motors. They're very expensive parts. And, uh, unfortunately, they failed in order to protect the surge protectors. So, um, you know, I asked the question if they could, we could go back to the surge protector company and see if they have any type of insurance coverage or whatever, because it is gonna be quite expensive repairs. So our, uh, operations, temporary operations manager is looking into that and hopefully he'll be able to get some relief there. Uh, let's see, some good news, the debt crew from our county has been out working the fields around the, the plant, sewage plant, has been doing a wonderful job. Everybody's raving on, uh, how it's freeing up some of the workers there so they can keep out in the field working. So, you know, that's a big plus and economically it works really great. So, the letters, I'm sure you all saw for the OIC violation went out. No real inquiries back, so hopefully that, uh, that's been put to bed. We do have, uh, and did get a quote from FLEES on having the licensed operator coverage from them while we continue to, you know, search out for a qualified replacement. Uh, either operations manager or head administrator to get somebody with the licenses, while we're also taking, you know, some of the employees are actually trying to get their certification as well. So that continues to move forward. Uh, advisory committee's in place now. They've kind of defined, uh, roles and responsibilities and have, you know, working in a candidate pipeline to find the, uh, administrative manager. Uh, audit report, I don't know, Ryan, did you get, uh, if they said they were gonna send a PDF copy of it yet? I have the hard copy. I'll follow up and get it up to you so we can circulate it amongst the council members. Uh, but there were no surprises and, you know, financially, Calix, you know, seems in pretty good shape. Uh, from a year-to-date budget perspective, I think we're about sixty percent of the way in and, you know, there's some puts and takes, but right now these, the budget seems to be tracking right along with where it's supposed to be. I went through it during the meeting, so no surprises there, which is good. Uh, and the union, uh, as you know, the employees, you know, voted to unionize. The reunions have been radio silent, so you know, we've, we're just kind of waiting to hear and start the negotiating process, which of course can be quite a lengthy, you know, uh, undertaking. So we're just, you know, gonna, they have to initiate it, so we're, we're kind of waiting, waiting for that. And let's see, I think that's, I think that's about it, unless you have any questions.
For Joe. All right. Thanks, Joe. Chris, anything new with you?
Yes, um, we had our, yeah, finally, we had our harbor, uh, we had our harbor authority meeting. Greg Wykamp was there from Edgewater that we've, uh, contracted with to do kind of a harbor management plan again, just for a quick, brief look back in twenty sixteen, he did it for us. And it's kind of the same review, all of available alternatives to manage the sedimentation, evaluate alternatives from feasibility and permitting standpoint, and identify the most cost-effective solutions. So as he stated, the four potential strategies, do nothing, dredge when necessary, construct sediment traps and confined disposal, well, uh, sites, those CDFs for channelization. None of those were, um, feasible last time and it's not looking too good for some of them this time. He told us where the Superfund program is at. There are seven segments and Kalamazoo is number seven, uh, our lake is number seven. Uh, they're in a planning process going on between now and the twenty-fourth of September, and this is just for the arsenic, arsenic and the PCB. And Greg was gonna look into that to see if the plan has come through yet, uh, and let us know about that. We also had him research the habitat for the sturgeon because that's what kept us from doing any dredging, possibility of dredging before because of they're an endangered species. Apparently in twenty, twenty, twenty-four and twenty-five, they released a hundred juvenile sturgeons. And now with the low water, actually, it would be beneficial for the sturgeon's life to have it dredged. So that might be a possibility to look into. Again, it doesn't appear there's money for dredging. It's, it's something that needs to be worked on. The Corps of Engineers received some money. I think, uh, we had a message from Bill Hazinga's office, but that's again only for down the channel. It's not into the lake. Uh, and now there's a new concern, uh, called the PFOS, and there was a concern that Eagle might be increasing regulations on that. And according to Greg, they're, they're not at this point. It's gonna stay just the way it is. There won't be any, any, uh, more, uh, dangerous requests of the city. Um, the funding, there's a variety of funding programs, the DNR Waterways, the Michigan Waterways, Emergency Dredging Program. And Douglas has had, um, some good luck with money. They, uh, have redone Schultz Park, uh, launch and working on the Union Street. The township got a one point two-three million dollar grant from the, uh, Kalamazoo River Natural Resources Trust Council, and they use that for the River Bluff Park. And that group is made up of the Fish and Wildlife, Eagle, Department of, uh, Department of Environment, the AG, and that might be some possibilities for funding if we look at it from the threesome. The, and then Greg specifically said we should be looking at grants because the money is hard to find for the kind of projects that we need to have done here. Um, the only surprise was, is that Douglas, or that the township let us know that they decided they maybe shouldn't be doing the, all the work anymore and it got dumped on, on Saga Talk, which is fair. Douglas has done it for, I think since it started, twenty sixteen, the township had it the last two years. And so Ryan very nicely stepped forward and said that the, they would do it with the understanding that the chairman would be doing a lot of the work that normally, uh, the township and Douglas had done, like notices and minutes and those kinds of things. Did I get it all?
Covered well.
Okay.
Questions for Chris? That was a good report.
Yeah, it was. And I heard there was more than one surprise at the meeting.
You should.
I heard that as well.
Just a little technical difficulty is all.
Technical.
Yeah.
A little technical glitch on the town.
You had to reload, you had to reload Zoom.
Um, all right, well, it's gonna be hard to top that, Russ, but, uh, or no, uh, well, there is no zoning board of appeals, correct? All right, well then.
Where do you go, Russ?
Thank you. Our next commission meeting is on Thursday, October second at six PM, right here at City Hall.
Uh, Joe, planning commission?
Yeah, um, two hundred and nine, as of Thursday, two hundred and nine results, uh, survey responses so far. So, yeah, pretty good numbers so far. Planning seemed, we all seemed pretty pleased with that. Uh, started out, um, have a more heavily weighted on residents and now it's kind of like at about a fifty-fifty split, so uh, hoping to get obviously more.
It's always fifty-fifty.
And yeah, the, uh, you know, we're really looking forward to the event at the high school coming up on the thirtieth. So, um, pretty much we're setting it up with a bunch of stations for, you know, uh, for our guests to interact. Uh, they'll be stationed by, you know, one of the planning members will be at each one of the stations. And, uh, uh, first station will be a welcome, you know, kind of explaining what a master plan is, what's gonna be in it and why they're, why everyone's here, you know, what's the purpose of it. Second station's really kind of a quick feedback, which will be, you know, some boards that'll say, you know, in Saga Talk, I love this, I want more of this, I want less of this. So people, you know, can kind of punch, punch in that and kind of a, you know, forward-looking in the next twenty, twenty-five years. What do you want, right? Do you want, do you, do you see the town as being the same? If it's different, how do you see it being different? Uh, and then the next station will be priorities, so kind of picking the three priorities that are most important and stack ranking them, you know, so we can kind of get a sense of what the community's looking for. Then there'll be a station on mobility and connectivity, which is all about, you know, walking, bicycling, um, wheelchairs, accessibility, cars, what have you, you know, where, where are there areas in the city where we need to improve? You know, potentially look at, you know, where we might put in other walkways or sidewalks and what have you, and get this, get some public input on that. Uh, and then there'll be a session on small-town, you know, character, the charm, right? You know, what people kind of, again, kind of stack rank what's important to them and add to that, right? And just kind of put notes in, onto the boards and say, this is what's important to us, what's not. General comments. There's gonna be a section with, uh, this is kind of creative, Saga bucks, right? So everybody's gonna get some fake money, uh, at least I think it's fake.
I suggested Monopoly money. That's what I tried, CJ, yeah.
Yeah.
Money from Singapore.
Oh, yeah, Singapore money.
Yeah, the con, the concept's pretty, pretty interesting, right? If you had some money, right? Meaning if you were gonna allocate tax dollars, how would you allocate it, right? And we kind of came up with some major categories, streets, parks, sidewalks, paths, waterfront access, public art, downtown improvements. And, um, you know, it'll be interesting to see how, uh, and then, of course, what else you might, that we didn't list that you might, you know, rather, rather invest dollars. And so we'll get a sense for how the public likes to see some of the tax dollars allocated. So, so, yeah, kind of looking forward to, um, you know, being able to get some, you know, really meaningful data from, you know, from our stakeholders out in the community and correlate it and see what they have to say. Anxious to be reporting it back to you.
That's great.
I hope you all be there.
Yeah. Questions for Joe?
No, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Um, okay, uh, PPW, Lauren.
Yeah, we meet tomorrow morning at ten AM, right here.
Awesome. Uh, I attract community non-motorized trail, Scott.
Ryan, from that meeting, the township, C two A.
Yeah, we kind of discussed, uh, you know, follow-up and, and things to send back to our, the tribal nations and, 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 and based on our, our walkthrough assessment. Uh, but I actually got a, uh, received a meeting invite late last week to, uh, uh, meet with the tribal nations in MDOT later this week. Uh, so it's actually sooner than we thought. We'd hear back and be able to kind of get together and discuss, uh, their, uh, their questions and, and hear further feedback on their assessment. So should have more to report.
Good, thanks.
Good. Uh, then the water system operations, who's gonna take that one?
We'd like to. Uh, we met last Tuesday, Tuesday, right? I think it was.
Yep.
Right? Yeah, last Tuesday at the City of Douglas, Village of Douglas City hall. And, um, we met with representatives from the township, the Village of Douglas, as well as the city and the consultant, Andy, and I forget the other person with him, but, uh, we had a really good discussion and this was post the changes, leadership changes at the, uh, uh, authority and uh, we're going through a number of different approaches that we may take with the authority in terms of asset management, costs, et cetera. So, uh, we're still in the process of, of kind of pro, no pun intended, processing what we have the opportunity to do. And, and I framed it personally as, you know, this is, this is kind of a special time at the moment because of the changes at the leadership at the authority. And there may be an opportunity to, um, you know, make some different organizational changes, which Andy from the consultant had a number of different approaches that other organizations in our area, other municipalities in our area have taken towards management of sewer and water authorities. So more to come.
That's great. It's nice to see that move. Um, and then I don't, we have anything on wildlife vote. Okay. That takes us to approval of accounts payable. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve accounts payable in the amount of four million, three hundred, six thousand, one hundred, twenty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents.
Next second. Oh.
All right, uh, second by Chris. Um, any questions?
Uh, not a question, just a comment. Ninety-six point nine percent of that amount is passed through costs for Allen County property taxes, Idaho area intermediate school district and Saga Tech public schools. In a very distant second was their legal expenses for the month of twenty-eight thousand, so.
Uh, it's a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Arbner?
Yes.
Let's see.
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And, uh, Stan?
Yes.
All right, one from Harry's. Uh, no public hearings, no unfinished business, takes us to new business, fourteen A, city hall elevator repairs and modernization. Thank you for being with us, Scott.
Thanks for having me. Um, yeah, pretty, pretty good discussion, uh, last week, Wednesday about this. Um, I, I kind of gave an overview that the, this city hall elevator, uh, failed back in July. Um, and it had, um, our McNally elevator typically comes into other repairs or also the person, the company that originally installed that elevator. Um, so they've been doing it for a lot of years. They were able to determine that the PLC, uh, programmable logic controller failed, which is basically the brain of the whole, uh, operation. So we sought, staff sought out a few different quotes, uh, just given the amounts that we're up against here. Uh, so McNally elevator, obviously. Um, elevator services LLC and all-access elevator. Um, staff is recommending to proceed with the repairs, uh, made by McNally elevator, which includes the replacement of the controller, the hydraulic power unit, travel cable and wiring, uh, new doors, locks and, or new, sorry, new door locks for safety and then testing and final inspection. This is something that gets inspection, inspected annually by Laura. So the total for that is, is not cheap, but it's forty-two thousand, nine eighty-two. Um, plus on the motion, I did put a little bit extra, ten percent extra for, um, the miscellaneous expenses that might pop up during the construction of it. Um, lead times are eight to thirteen weeks. And the alternative that we considered too, uh, was, was to install a new elevator, um, which came in at eighty-five thousand dollars plus potentially, most likely some structural changes to the building to, to be able to get it to fit. So, uh, just strictly due to costs alone, uh, given how, you know, it's, it's used fairly infrequently. Um, and, uh, we, we have it for the less expensive options. So, uh, at the workshop, uh, we did, um, I think, uh, council member, um, Clark, uh, asked for more of a itemized price list, trying to make sense of that quote that we received from, from McNally. Um, the, the, the components are all lumped in and it's pretty consistent with the, the different quotes that we got, but they're lumped into a modernization package, um, just to make sure that they're all, all the pieces are compatible with, with one another. Um, so it was a little bit difficult for McNally to come up with an itemized price list specifically. Um, but they did break it down a little bit, just noting that parts and labor are generally split fifty-fifty for this, with the majority of the labor hours being, are being allocated to the controller and selector replacement and programming. Um, and then another, uh, good point that was brought up at the workshop was, okay, we've got this list of, of five components that we're replacing. What, what would be the absolute, are they all five needed to get this thing operational again? Or can we shave off any of these just to make it operational while we're considering, you know, the interior of city hall, reconfigurations and whatnot? So, um, asked them, uh, if they could take a deeper dive into that specifically. They have some internal engineers that were able to look back at all of our old invoices. Um, get a, get a depiction of what our system is with the, the specific components. Um, they, they were making no guarantee, but they did indicate that it may be possible to reduce that list from the five different components just down to the controller um, and the selector. Um, if that were the case, if it were just those two components, then the grand total would be twenty thousand dollars, uh, twenty thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars of a six to ten week lead time. So pretty substantial savings if that can happen. But I think it's, my recommendation at least would be to prepare for, for worst-case scenario. They're really not gonna know if we can limit it to those two components until they get the parts installed and start programming and making, and testing it to make sure that they all work, uh, with one another. So, um, there's a sample motion before you. I'm happy to take any questions. Um.
Chris.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve the work proposal submitted by McNally elevator to repair and modernize the city hall elevator in the amount of forty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars or price not to exceed forty-seven thousand dollars.
A second.
Questions, discussion?
Uh, Mayor, a quick one, if I may. Uh, looks like you settled on, um, paying for this over four payments. Was that Nicole's recommendation to sp- spread this out over four payments?
Yeah, it, it just, it seems, you know, like a, a lot of our construction projects, you, you have different, um, pay apps that come in and it just seemed like holding off at least the final payment until the very end made sense for us.
It sounds good to me. You have one?
Other questions, Russ?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, do we know when this was originally installed?
The best of our knowledge was nineteen eighty-six or eighty-eight, one of the two.
And it's been maintained over the years, of course. Um, so I think, you know, if you look at the, and I don't know what the service life of a elevator is. Um, so I think, you know, if you look at the, and I don't know what the service life of a elevator is, a lift, actually, it's not an elevator, a lift. You know, that's almost 40 years. So I think that's a pretty good investment the city made initially on this. Um, and I support, um, the work that's being done on it. Um, and we need to do it quickly so we can continue to get the use of it. Um, so essentially what we're going to get is a brand new lift, except the car, is essentially what I understand, so. Not quite a gut rehab, but close.
Right. Still going to look the same. All the buttons are going to be the same. The car is going to be the same.
Yep.
Yeah.
But people maybe won't be quite as afraid of getting stuck.
We won't have to carry people up the stairs anymore.
Any other questions before we vote? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Muntzey.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Stan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Um, that takes us to 14B, a Warnock drain. Um, Ryan can talk us through and just want to thank Chris for coming from the Drain Commissioner office, so. Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, um, you were here at your, uh, workshop, uh, earlier in, in September and discussed the, uh, at-large assessment, uh, information from the Drain Office. And, um, Commissioner himself really wanted to be there and had a, had a conflict, unfortunately, but did send his, his staff and, and engineers, as you, as you may recall. Uh, so we discussed at that time, uh, kind of the assessment and, and some of the reasoning for it, um, kind of how they came up with our at-large assessment. Some of that information was provided in your meeting packet. Uh, but we discussed that, uh, there was a, uh, a notice issue that, um, resulted in us not being able to participate in the day of reviews, where we would have had an opportunity to kind of provide our feedback for them to consider before they kind of finalize things. And so your request to me, uh, was to go back to the Drain Office and see if they're willing to, uh, renotice our day of review. So we had an opportunity to really participate in that, that process. And so I, I followed up with the Drain Commissioner and, um, they, they worked with us and said, yep, well, we'll do a, uh, renotice your day of review. And, and, uh, we set up a, a meeting time for me to meet with, uh, the, uh, the Drain Commissioner, um, the Deputy Drain Commissioner. And then, um, they're engineered, uh, to really kind of go through, um, our perspective on, on the assessment. I was able to work with, uh, John Moxie, with Lisa Vanderbrink to, um, kind of lay out some of the concerns that we had with, um, the reasoning, um, uh, and how they arrived at our assessment. And they were able to kind of provide their perspective and how they came up with, with it and provide some, you know, further clarification. So, um, after our kind of day of review, uh, the Drain Commissioner, um, uh, gave me a call and, and indicated that, um, if we were willing to, um, uh, pay our assessment upfront, um, that, uh, that there would be an opportunity here to, uh, reduce our assessment by five thousand dollars, which would be about an eight percent reduction. Um, so, um, we have a few different options. We can, uh, pay it in full with, you know, less five thousand dollars and, and, um, save that cost plus the interest cost that we would have had if we, um, paid it over three years. Uh, we could choose to spread this cost out over three years, but then we'd have to pay the interest on top of that. Uh, plus the, the five thousand dollars wouldn't come off the, uh, the total. Um, or we could choose to appeal this to the, the probate court and kind of go through that process if we, um, dispute the, the actual assessment itself. So, uh, my recommendation to you is, is to, to pay the, the at-large assessment upfront and, um, appreciate the Drain Office being willing to, to reduce that amount, um, for us. Um, it still wasn't a budgeted expense, unfortunately, based on, you know, when we became aware that we were going to receive an at-large assessment. Um, but, uh, you know, we, we added a, um, again, still being audited, but, uh, we expect that, you know, we, uh, will have added quite a bit to your, uh, fund balance and savings in your general fund, uh, for last fiscal year. So the dollars are, are certainly there. Um, but I would recommend that we pay it out of your general fund and, um, next month, we're going to kind of give you a budget update and look at whether or not we need to make some adjustments, um, after first quarter.
Questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mary Anderson. I've never met the Drain Commissioner.
Sorry.
Quite all right, quite all right. Thank you for being here.
I'm the Elegant County Drain Commissioner. I just was elected last fall, so I'm new to this whole assessing thing this year. And I, I do apologize. I'm not sure what happened quite in our office, why you didn't get the proper notice when everyone else did in the district. I'm just, something, we had, on a board you, but we had what's called a 197, where you take a large drain and you go through all the sub drains in it, make sure everything's a portioned right. All of these big drains, we had over close to a hundred drains that we had to send notices out for this past summer, so. Unfortunately, you asked me the one that somehow got missed or in the mix, but I do apologize for that. Yeah.
Okay, having you here.
Do you, Mayor, do you need a motion?
Nice to meet you guys.
Do we have?
Oh, you know.
I don't believe we have a motion yet. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll make it. Mo- motion to pay the at-large assessment for the Warnock drain in full in the amount of fifty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, cut, uh, questions, discussion? Appreciate the, um, consideration. And appreciate giving us the opportunity to be heard. All right.
Well, yeah, and just maybe for your, one thing that, that did come out of the day review as well. I think some of the questions that, that there were, were, you know, were any, were all the, as you may recall, that obviously there was a recolor that had to be replaced, but Douglas also did some, um, water and sewer work at the same time. Uh, that cost was, was taken out, uh, so that cost isn't being assessed to us. They, they paid for that cost in full. Um, that area was also widened, uh, for a future kind of path or trail. And so that, that widened area was actually covered in full by Douglas as well. So none of that was included in the assessment. It was just simply kind of replacing the area that, that was there in that, uh, culvert.
All right, so roll call vote.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Muntzey.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Stan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, this takes us to the dark sky, uh, at Oval Beach, which is on page 20 of our packet.
All right, let me get back to page 20.
I know, everybody's scrolling.
I feel like I'm looking for my age.
Oh, just wait until that roller starts.
All right, I'll, I'll make the motion.
All right.
Motion to approve dark sky night at Oval Beach to take place on October 21st, 2025.
Second.
All right, uh, discussion, questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I am fully supportive of this event. I think it's going to be very exciting. I hope to be able to, to attend myself. In reading the application again, however, there's one thing that, that I think is, well, I don't think it's of concern, is that the event is being sponsored by the Douglas UCC, United Community Church, I believe is the UCC. Um, I do not see why the city's PPW is a cosponsor, as indicated on the form. I do not believe that's appropriate. The city is supporting this event by allowing the use of Oval Beach for the event. I, I would ask that they be removed from cosponsoring. The city should not be cosponsoring the event, though I'm in support of the event as a city to use the beach for this.
I don't know what kind of funds, um, other than, um, if we need any, um, service out there as far as having the Sheriff's Department out there or putting cones out there or anything like that. Was there any cost associated with this for the city?
Yeah, and Scott and Jamie, I just had the safety meeting with the Sheriff's Department. I don't know that it required any actual policing services.
Yeah, no, it, a lot of these things were pretty much on autopilot, so they'll, they can make a request for cones or any sort of material that, um, that DPW can offer. And, and we leave it up to the event coordinators to actually set up their event and use the material. So, um, sheriff and fire, if I recall on the, the safety meeting, they didn't feel the need to, to be present during this one.
The cones themselves, like, we don't, I'm sorry.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, I don't think it has anything to do with, with cones or anything like that. It's the idea of having a, uh, having the Park and Public Works Committee be part of an event. It's not our event. It's the, it's the United Church Crisis Event. And I don't think it sets a good precedent to have us in there, especially when it's really non-elected people that are supposedly representing the city on this.
Um, I, I was elected and I'm a part of the Parks and Public Works Committee, so I would just, I would just like all of us to be a part of it.
A committee should not be doing an event with somebody else. We want to do it by ourselves, let's do it by ourselves. But we shouldn't start the practice of having a committee, uh, go in on an event that's not our event. Certainly will support it like we do every other one.
Just a question, just to help me understand. So what, tell me more about the concern, what, what, what your concern is of the.
I don't think we should have, uh, a committee or the city be part of an event that's not their event. It's the UCC's event. I don't think we've done that before. I don't think we should start the precedent now. Obviously, all the support's going to be there like we do for any event, but why would this event have a Park and Public Works Committee attached to it? Why?
What's the, why?
Just been discussions that we've had about dark skies and trying to get educated, um, getting our community educated on what it means exactly. And then just being, um, you know, just volunteers, if you will, to help out with the event.
And again, it goes to the whole issue then of the dark skies, which, um, in, by doing this and having us be a co-coordinator for that, it shows that the city council approves of that. I'm not sure if we do. I'm not sure if I do. I don't like the impression that the public and park and public works is, uh, going forward with this with, with the, with the implication that the city that approves or the city council approves of dark skies.
Russ, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, and it, this is a difficult one, but I don't know any other way to say it. Douglas UCC is a great organization, it's not-for-profit. It's also a religious organization. I'm not sure it's the city's position to be partnering with a religious organization that might suggest that we are, I don't know, I, I don't even know what to call that, but that I, I do not think it's appropriate for the reason that Councilmember Peterson mentioned, as well as I just don't think we should be, not, we should support the event, which the city is to approve the application, but I just don't think it's appropriate to have a city approving or partnering with a religious organization. That's, that's part of our standard constitutional separations.
What does this mean on the application? PPW pending vote and approval. Vote and approval by who?
Us, that's what we're doing right now.
That's what.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess a question for Ryan and Sarah and Jamie's still online and can hear us. It, don't we sponsor stuff or, or is this, is it true that we'd haven't sponsored, city hasn't sponsored?
Well, I've never seen.
We, we can look at all the events we do. We do a lot of parades. Um, you know, we participate in them. We support them. I mean, some, some, we are allowed to understate statute because there's things like the Fourth of July, things like, it's like Labor Day. Um, I mean, let's, I'm just going to suggest we first like just to agree that we focus a bit of that. I mean, I'm hearing Councilman Gardner say something. I see Councilman Peterson agree that this is something that we want to support. Uh, the concern I'm hearing is, is about a potential precedent, church and state, whatever you want to call it. Um, so what's, what's the quick fix for this? I mean, do we just, you know, do we just, do we amend the motion to say, you know, you know, support the event put on by Mr. Clark? You know, who's, who is the dark sky representative? Um, he came and presented to us before. He's on the, he's on the application now. You know, he's, he's, he is basically the, you know, sort of brains behind it. And, you know, we had Mr. Shipah come visit us, but, you know, to advocate for the, um, CPR activity, you know, you know, I think, giving him the nod. He's been doing that actively. He did it at Community United High School on Friday. He's done it with music in the park. So what do we simplify this and, you know, either just Mr. Clark and Ms. Thiel, you know, she's also a citizen as, as in addition to a committee member of the Parks and Public Works. You know, maybe that's the simple solution here. I, I, I think this is a solvable problem. You know.
Yeah, and PPW just really just wanted to promote it. Um, so if you don't want PPW to promote it through the city, we can choose not to and just have the UCC promote it.
I can get on board with that.
That would, that'd be fine.
Can I make a suggestion just to make sure that the Douglas UCC is in the motion? That's who's going to carry the insurance for that. I did, um, I, I know you said you were going to use Chris Clark's name.
Okay.
Yeah, still the, the event sponsor would be Douglas UCC.
Yes, yep. That's who's, uh, providing the insurance for the event.
Thanks, Jamie.
All right. Thank you.
So, um. So there's nothing in the motion that, you know, indicates that, Jamie, do we just need to change the application then to take the PPW out of it?
From my perspective, I think so. Um, just that PPW is only mentioned on the business name, but, um, let me see, who signed the application here? One moment. So Judy, the PPW is who signed the application though, um, not UCC. So Judy Thiel is the PPW representative. Um, so it may be best if UCC fills out a new application and maybe you could put that in your motion. So they're the only ones on that application, because I do see PPW's name on here, Judy's name here. So that'd be my suggestion, but then again, um, make that to a city manager and council decisions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so Ja- Jamie, let me get this straight then. So Douglas UCC will provide a certificate of insurance for this, correct?
Yeah, I believe Chris is working with Mark Becken right now. We've been emailing about the insurance, but that is who it is going through. Yes, Douglas UCC.
Okay, thank you. Well, then that's who, that's who the organization should be, whoever the insurance is through.
Let me, let me, I think I made the, the motion denies. Let me, um, try to offer an amendment, you know, mo- motion to approve the dark sky event at Oval Beach to take place on October 21st, 2025. Pending an updated application, clarifying the sponsor.
Well, second.
Okay.
Did that sound good to you, Jamie?
It did, yes. I was just saying that. It sounded good. Thank you.
All right, um, would you get a second?
Second.
Yeah, I seconded.
Um, roll call vote, I guess, um, or Jamie, or do we can do this by voice?
Uh, you can do voice vote on that.
All right, all in favor say yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's take this to the second public comment section. Uh, anyone wish to make a public comment can be about anything. Hi, Diana. Provide your name and.
Diana Decker, 128C Elizabeth. Um, I want to thank every council member. You guys are just doing a great job. There's, let's see, I'm going to start with, um, the Dan Fox was here and I was mentioned to him outside that is, um, my neighbor had an issue, health issue this morning, and they were so professional and compassion and, uh, knowledgeable. I mean, th- they were there right away. And so, um, you know, we're just so fortunate to have them in the first responders in our area. Um, I went to, uh, another, um, township, um, planning commission. And, uh, the master plan, what you're doing, Joe, is just wonderful with the planning commission updating it. Um, and, you know, for things that's going to happen so soon in the future. Uh, it was in another municipality, um, it was unreal, uh, with, uh, the crowd that was there on not doing their master plan. Um, well, you know, just things that could be happening that they weren't aware of. That's boom, you know, all of a sudden, here we are. Scott, my gosh. I go by to pick up the mail and the guys are working in the rain. They're pulling the weeds. They're cleaning up everything, just amazing, you know, for everything. The drain assessment's a great, great thing because I have a drain assessment cottage owner's drain and BNGs, 15 owners. Um, that surface water that drains just really, um, help the whole area. Um, let's see here, there was just all kinds of little notes I made here. Greg Muntzey, your show is wonderful. I just love listening to the new people in the community, the new business owners and people have different opinions and voices. Your show is just wonderful.
You're making me blush.
Okay. The inner urban is such a wonderful thing that we have in our community, that app that we were talking about. And yay for the one mill, let's go, you know, I mean, just wonderful things. Um, and thank you to all the council, uh, for, um, it's working, what you're doing. Um, I have new neighbors, one full-time neighbor and a second full-time. I'm, I mean, I am just so excited that what you have done is working on the cap. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other, any other comments? Any comments online? All right, uh, with that, I don't think we had any correspondence. Uh, council comments, Chris?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, again, it's, it's a different change out there. When you drive down the streets, there's a place to park, leaves are falling and there are little children running around. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, Councilmember Dean for doing the cutting the baby type negotiation that we just had. I appreciate that very much. And Ryan for taking on the harbor authority. I, I told him then, I said, you know, we have a list of priorities, but we keep adding to them. Poor Ryan, yes, now we're going to do the heating, the, the fire pit, and now he's going to have to take over the Lake Shore Harbor. At least we'd only, he only meet three times. Poor Ryan gets now. We're going to do the heating, the the fire pit, and now he's going to have to take over the Lake Shore Harbor. At least we'd only, he only meet three times a year. And that's all.
Russ?
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, to the great reports. I appreciate all the efforts that this council does to serve the community. Two things. One is this Saturday is the Sagatuck Film Festival. This is a shameless plug for Logan White and his partners. It's Saturday, September twenty-seventh at Sagatuck Women's Club and American Legion Hall. Unfortunately, I'll be in Chicago for Family Weekend, but I'll be there in spirit. And I want to thank Andrew Malakis and Donna and Joe from Lake Shore Resort for taking our bathrooms. So I'm excited to see it. My daughter works there during the summer. She'll be working there when she comes back for fall break. So I hope to get to see it in action or at least see what they're going to be doing with it. So I just want to thank the Malakas. They're a big part of our community. So thank you.
Um, just on the tourism front, we were talking about September being a great time for people to come visit us. It's a lot of retirees. They have more time to really just chat with all of us and it's been really fantastic. I've had people from Ohio and Indiana and St. Louis all coming into town and a lot of them had never been to Sagatuck. Strange when you hear, you know, places like St. Louis, we know we have a lot of people that come here, but it's their first time. So a lot of retirees, it's been fun talking to everyone. And then just a lot of people here for their anniversary weekends because a lot of people got married in Sagatuck and now they come back and enjoy their anniversaries here. So it's just been really nice at a slower pace right now, but really welcoming people that are outside our area.
Thanks, Lauren. Scott?
I'll echo what the Mayor Pro Tem said. I'm absolutely amazed and impressed with how strong our shoulder season, at least by my observation appears to be. I I mean, I've seen so many folks, you know, in town, you know, even though the schools have, you know, returned to session. So I mean, I think it's, I think it bodes really well for us how we seem to be successful. And I and I give a lot of that credit to the CVB. I think they've done a great job in marketing the the shoulder season and they continue to come up with new and innovative ideas. So I'm I'm looking forward to what they bring us next in terms of ways to stretch out the soul, shoulder, shoulder season. And with that, the Lions start in about thirty-five minutes.
That's true.
Gregory, no talk for more than twenty.
I was just going to say, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk for about a half hour. Is that okay? No. I I'd like like to echo what what Mayor Pro Tem said. Lauren, isn't it great meeting new people and and so many more weddings this year? I did twice as many weddings as last year. Had a big wedding at Ivy House this weekend. I still have some big ones coming up. I'll be doing wedding work through November. And so I know that the Ivy House is already booked for next year for two thousand twenty-six and half booked for two thousand twenty-seven, talking to Candace and Brian Grant. And and it's wonderful. It's wonderful to see the growth. I love new folks because sometimes we we get used to it, don't we? Because we live here and we work here all the time. But when new people come here, it's nice to get that fresh perspective from people and 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 it makes me remember what a special place we live in. Want to remind everybody, it's that time of year for pumpkin and glitter. And and we'll be getting the hay bale or the straw bales and the corn stalks from Farmer Elmer. He'll be dropping them off at the DPW this week. I also secured some straw bales and corn stalks for the city of Douglas as well. So he'll drop ours off first and take theirs to them. I want to thank the quaint cottages and Better Homes and Gardens between Ethan and his wife Tammy, as well as Kevin Shipah. They've all pitched in to pay for all of the materials that are needed to decorate the town. And we will be decorating on Monday and Tuesday. You'll see Jim Babcock and myself out there in our cute little outfits and just glittering everything up. We have some special little like glitter accessories that were donated as well. So we're super excited to decorate again for fall. And I want to thank the DPW. I've been doing this for about twenty years and and it's a lot of fun. We used to do it with the Business Association, but the last five or six years we've continued doing it through just the community health, folks saying that they want to keep seeing it and they like to see it. So I want to thank the businesses and all the volunteers for continuing the tradition of follow rising Sagatuck.
Same thing. I mean, I'm out every morning walking through town with my dog and I just can't believe how many people I talk to these days and they're all happy. They want to be here. It's not, it's not this intense, you know, I've got to get somewhere. I've got to fight the crowds or whatever. People have just been happy and I've had some great conversations. And it does does make you reflect on how lucky we are to be in such a great town. And I want to give this guy a plug because just listening to his report on the inner urban, I hear it every every week, somebody's telling me how great inner urban is. You run a great outfit over there.
We all do. Becky does a great job. Teru, our president, she does a wonderful job. We all do.
Well, I don't know. We're all grateful because that is truly an outstanding service to the community. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Couple quick things. One, September is the best month. Everywhere I've lived, best months. Gregor, you have to tell me what glitter accessories are sometime because you've piqued my curiosity. And then just some thank yous. Diana, thank you. That was so kind of you to take time out of your evening to come and give your feedback and thanks. It's really, it really means a lot to me and I I'm pretty sure it means a lot to everybody around this table. So thank you and it's great to see you. Scott, thank you. And I think we did come up with a good dark sky solution, so I'm I'm thrilled with that. Yeah, and thanks to everybody here. And with that, who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say yes. Getting adjourned.
We were all beating ourselves to do that, yeah.